So what does the council meeting do order? We could, I'll write some conclusions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, you want me to get my trophy now?
I put some trophies out here. These are a couple of the many that we have for the rib cook-off coming up. But let's start off with a roll call if you don't mind.
White, there's a lot of them here.
Debbie Cox here.
Marty Lundenby here.
Any bad friend.
And Paul is traveling and said he might call in. I said, the agenda's not too heavy, but said he may call. But so he's excused. And we'll start off mayor town update. One of them, the trophies over here, these are just a couple of samples. We have several other trophies as well that are for the rib cook-off. Quite creative, I thought, having a rack of ribs go out to the first place trophy winner for the rib cook-off that's going to be this weekend, Saturday. So if you want to participate, we're just each bringing like three racks of ribs. And they're going to be numbered and blind taste tested. We'll probably actually look for probably two or three people that aren't in the rib contest to taste each one of the ribs and let them be the main taste tester. We'll probably have like a people's choice and things as well. But my wife will maybe go a little more detail how she wants to do that because that's her decision, not mine. But anyway, I'm just, I'm excited by the trophies. I thought that was a nice touch and excited to have the contest all together. And so anyway, for other mayor town update stuff, for the last week I was in Salt Lake City multiple weeks with a conference, the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference was in Salt Lake and their theme was a different point of view, I think is how they worded that. Yeah, point of view theme and it's about things change as you look from a different perspective and they were, you know, it was kind of the theme of how they wanted to present things at this particular conference. And I have to say, Mayor John Pike from St. George, he's the president of the league for this last 12-month stint and what a fabulous job that all of them have done to put these conferences together that have wonderful instruction and teaching and things like that. And so it was a great opportunity to go to many different breakout sessions where you can get to pick what is that highlight, what you want to learn about and try to get some insight into the government and the interactions of the government with us. Couple of things I came home with, man, these guys are really into these technologies or really, UDOT is really behind them. For example, in the Salt Lake area, they are putting some of the bus lines into the technology realm to the point that each bus can communicate with the stoplights to keep them on track and on time. And so the lights will be changing based on the bus routes instead of everybody sitting still at a stoplight. And so they're taking that idea on the, not many bus lines will probably come into the tracks system and to where they're improving traffic quality everywhere. The other thing, as a hot topic, was other modes of transportation. As they get into biking and scooters, there's a lot of scooters up there. And not only do they have scooters now, they have scooter lanes. And so some of the traffic lanes they have had, they have actually dedicated lanes that are segregated enough so it gets the scooter off the sidewalk, gets them on the roadways where they can, you know, be safer for the scooter driver and for any passengers walking on the sidewalks. And it's becoming this well-accepted mode of transportation where people just have to go 10 blocks instead of, and so you find that now there's less congestion because someone can just hop on the scooter and off they go. Anyway, there's autonomous vehicles. They have autonomous vehicle that was at the college up there that is, you know, completely unmanned and it goes from point A to point B to transport students in autonomous way without any driver where you can hop on that and you're going skipping across campus on autonomous vehicles. And so there's a lot of that technology that's going to be coming our way. They were talking about it today was a meeting that I had with the DTEC, which is the Executive Committee, and they were talking about that as well. Now, some of that technology is even going to be hitting our highways as far as with fiber networks and so forth along the highways that will allow autonomous cars to communicate based on traffic and different things like that. Anyway, there, everybody's jumping on the technology wagon right now and it's kind of fun to see that, you know, five years, 20, 10 years from now, you're going to see a lot more of it because they're already implementing some of this stuff. The other thing that, hang on a second, my notes real fast. Some of the other issues that they talked about at DTEC today, it's actually our meeting right after DTEC is the COG meeting. COG is the Council of Governments meeting. And they have it right after the DTEC meeting because we're all part of that as well. Both meetings, just the subject changes from the UDOT and the federal government over to the county. And we have talked in the past in this meeting about Main Street realignment. One of the things that we need to get moving on that is engineering that provides the easements that we need to do the rope work and that's about 20 grand. And I requested we get on their agenda and today was it. And they gave us 20 grand to pay for the engineering to do that realignment work down there as far as the engineering goes. And so the county will move ahead with that engineering through, I think they farm it out to another engineering firm, not them themselves, but they'll be doing that. And I was stoked today that everybody voted for that and it was pretty easy sell when it comes to $20,000 to these guys. You know, when you got St. George with a budget of 350 million, you know, $20,000 sounds like pocket change, you know, that's what they send up in payments, you know, for their staff meetings, you know. But they, I mean, it's a huge deal to us because as a small community, that amount of money stops that kind of a project or keeps going. And I'm just excited to say that we got that money and that this is going to move forward with getting that signed off. Anyway, it was, the other thing that they were going over into that meeting, in the COG meeting, one thing that they're going to be doing is the bus systems from St. George to Springdale. It'll probably have a stop in Washington, maybe another stop in Hurricane, but they're kind of trying to design it where there's very few stops between St. George and Springdale. And they'll probably start as early as 6:00 AM and go till 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock at night. So some of the early traffic is probably going to be those that are working up there that can just hop on that bus and be there in no time. I'm sure it'll be a reasonable fare, low fare kind of a thing. But they've got, they're talking about $8 million in buses and charging stations because they're going to, they'll go, I think they're leaning towards electric because of, you know, pollution's one part of it, that's a small component. It's more about the overall cost of operation on electric bus compared to the diesels significantly differently. The electrics are a little more prime, but they're a lot cheaper overall when you look at your lifespan. And they've got some grant money that's getting thrown at them. UDOT's throwing a bunch of money to really pay for cost of operation for as much as four or five years. And so it doesn't really fall too heavily on the county budget, but it's, it's kind of cool to see things move that direction. This will help people that are wanting to get a hotel room, they can't get one up there, they can get one in St. George, hop on that bus and be there in no time without worrying about where they're going to park when they get there. And so the hope is that it'll help traffic up there, especially for those that know it's going to be bad, they'll start riding the bus more to get up there. And anyway, it's, just thought I'd let you guys know that's kind of coming at the community as well. Anyway, that's all I've got to discuss on that, on the update for the mayor's office. So, oh, one other thing that I was meant to bring up, Michelle and I were just talking about it. We've sent out a request, everybody, I've had a lot of people come to me and say that they suggest that we have a meet greet for all the candidates. And we reached out to all the candidates and those that are here that have said yes, that would be happy to meet, do a meet greet or some type of event and those that others have not responded or they have responded and said they're not interested in having a meet greet. And so because it's, I don't know, it's a mixed bag. You know, if I, if we go and have one and they've already said, no, I'm not going to have one, then it looks like I'm trying to power play this and, you know, either force them to show up or make them look back because they didn't. And, you know, I told Michelle a long time ago, this is her decision, not mine, because I don't want to be in the mix trying to manipulate anything. But I just, I've had a lot of people ask me about it. I just wanted you to know, the reason so far, right now, we're not planning on having one because Blackhawk and the others, candidates have said that they don't want to participate. So anyway, so just so you know, it's not me mixing this whole idea of having one or not having one. If anyone is interested in having one and think that that's a wrong decision, it's not my decision, it's Michelle's decision, go for it, call her, send her an email, whatever. I, you know, if you blow up her phone enough, she'll probably decide that maybe it's the right thing to do, but without any input from my office, I think that's the best way to handle it is to call her. So that's, that's how we'll do it. Instead of voicing to me, I've had people come to me, but I need to write down names. Anyway, so that's kind of, you know, what we're, how we'll handle that. So, any questions on anything that I've brought up so far? Okay, discussion action, item number one, ordinance 0-2019-12 combining lots AV/CD/PT-1-18 and AV/CD/PT-1-19. This is Cedar Point property where they just wanted to build a house without being right next to neighbors. So they're just, have two lots, they're putting together this one lot so they can build a house in the middle of the lot and have, you know, larger setbacks than what is required.
And it was determined that the easements were in the front, not in between the lot?
Yes. Uh-huh. Yeah, there are no easements between the lot though, so. Anyway, the planning commission looked at this and they passed on to us to, you know, suggesting approval. Is there any discussion on it?
I think we pretty much went through it at planning commission.
So, anybody want to do a motion on that?
I make a motion, we accept ordinance number 0-219-12 and ordinance vacating easements between and combining the parcels with easement between.
Well, did we determine there's easement in between those things? There should.
Yeah.
There should be easements that would have been in between.
Yeah, we need to, you need to make sure.
Yeah, it would have been two separate lots.
Okay. And combining the parcels ABCDPT-1-18 and ABCDPT-1-19.
I'll second that. And vote. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries. Item number two is resolution R-2019-F13, appointment of Ben Billingsley as a town purchasing agent. I've made some purchasing errors as far as what our policies are. I'll say I didn't mean to, but the only result was, and it will have to come plain nonsense that I brought that up, is that when we were hauling cinders for the road improvements that we did several months ago, we had volunteers hauling cinders. Didn't cost us anything other than a little bit of fuel and allowing them to use our pit paths, basically, cinder pit, basically, and we can have all the cinders go on for free. And so a lot of them used our pit paths and they were hauling cinders left and right. We did probably two miles of road. And at the time that they stopped doing that and we had those two miles done, it really hardly any cost to get all to the community. And so I made a call to them and says, what's the truck time going to cost me to go one more mile? And so, and they gave me a price and I called another vendor and says, how much per load is that going to cost us per load? And the first guy was significantly less money, $40 less per load. And so I went ahead and says, well, let's start all and see what it takes to get up there. Well, the bill came out about eight grand when it sold out, which is over how much the purchasing policy is supposed to be. So basically, we said eight grand, got three miles of cinders out of it. And so that's a cost probably like 35 bucks, you know, per load when you factor in the freebie that we got as well and everything else. Anyway, because of the purchasing policy, I thought it'd be best, let's sign this to Ben and he can always make sure that we're doing the purchasing correctly. And so anyway, that's what I'm recommending. And so we have a resolution here that basically appoints him. I just would move that we pass a resolution R-2019-1320, Ben Billingsley is our purchasing agent.
I've got a question. Are we putting a dollar amount limit to Big Tim out right or just purchase without other authorization or?
We already have a purchasing policy in place of when we reach certain thresholds of what the policy is. He's going to be the guy that we just go through on purchasing to make sure we're adhering to the policy. And so when he has a concern over me hauling some cinders, then he can say, well, how many loads, how big is the bill going to be? And so, and that way we're just adhering to the policy all the time. So, and then that would just be his job. It takes the mic out of my back and I appreciate that. So, did I say that right, Ben?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we.
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion? Do you have any other questions or anything? Okay. So vote.
Aye.
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 So it is, we're going to get up here in like 10 minutes.
One more case, Ken. One more case.
And the next one is approval of consent calendar for August.
I've mentioned that we'll check that was signed and everything is good.
Any questions from anybody or discussion?
If you don't mind, I've got a quick comment. So earlier this year, I had notations off to the side, a little bit of time consuming the way I've been before. So what I did this time on the operational budget report is it's color coded in that last column for percentage use. So if it's green, the darker the shade of green, the closer to zero it is. As it gets closer to, so at this point in the year where it's 17% of the fiscal years have passed, the closer it gets to that 17%, it will become white. And then over 17% it's red. So if you're looking at it in color, you'll see anything that's a dark red should be concerning to you. So that's kind of a, it's a quick and easy way for us to identify categories where we've overspent relative to where we're at in the year. That's both on revenue and the expense categories. And I tried to notate anything that was out of the ordinary and the reason for that.
So to clarify your clarification, when you have, for example, the zoning fees is red, it's red because we've got more than we've suspended or what is that?
More than. So on the revenue side, red is a.
It's a good thing.
It's a good thing if you look at it that way. Yep.
Okay.
But then on the expense side, the red would be a negative, have overspent relative to the year.
Well, let's just see how you're doing here.
Yeah.
Is this fiscal year from July into July?
Fiscal year.
It's like public safety, we've already used 90% of the budget.
Yeah, exactly. So then you'll see the note off to the side, that budget was a $70 budget, just knowing that we had to buy dog tags.
All right. Well, we'll leave that one aside as well.
Good job.
I think a lot you should figure out.
Yeah, I appreciate the interest on that because, so if you coded this, we're just basically about a percentage and the number changes on that, they changed stores for you?
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Well, I know it's because of the groomer.
Um.
Well, it was the outlay that was.
Yeah, the outlay.
Yeah, the road capital outlay, that was a groomer. And that's at 100%, but it's not going to change through the end of the year. So that's, that one's right on.
Any questions? Have we, have we already made a motion yet?
No. I make a motion, we approve the consent calendar for August 2019.
Second.
Vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
We've got minutes.
And we have some minutes here.
Everybody ready?
Any questions on it?
Make a motion and we approve the minutes for page 13, 2019, that was written.
I'm set.
Second to that motion.
Okay, vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. One other thing I'm just reminding myself of, I should just update everyone in the bathrooms. We finally passed off on engineering and next week, Richard Fisher says he's got some time in between jobs and we're going to start getting that dirt work done. This is perfect timing based on our event coming up with Founder's Day this weekend. So we've got a big hole back there, but it's, we're going to get that filled in and start trenching and digging up grass and get moving forward on that. So anyway, so that's kind of the update on that, that's to move forward, but probably starting next week with engineering, finally, on the way. So anyway, reports, recommendations, events. Richard, Debbie, who want to get one?
So this Saturday is Founder's Day and we've got a really fun day scheduled. We're going to have a parade that starts at 10:30, so if you're interested, bring a horse or your four-wheeler or whatever you want to bring.
Candy for the kids, of course.
Yeah, candy, throw in candies, always fun. So we'll meet at the mailboxes at 10 o'clock and we'll start at 10:30. Then we're going to come right over to the park and we'll start right from there. We're getting inflatables, we've got a big giant obstacle course and bounce house and slide and we've got bungee, jumping for the kids. And we've got a face painter coming for the other kids and we've got some games. We'll do the, we've got a pie eating contest and donut eating contest and relay race and potato sack race. Yeah. So it should be really fun. We're doing the rib cook-off and fortunately we've got some residents that are going to smoke and bake and whatever, however they want to bring them. And then we're going to have kids selling coleslaw and beans and cupcakes and cookies and all kinds of fun stuff. It's $4 for adults, $2 for the youth. We'll have hot dogs, the kids can have hot dogs if they're not into the ribs. We'll have drinks and chips and a good time. So hopefully pass the word, get your neighbors out and love to be done.
I think you put some cupcakes or something out there, a few on chip or dessert or something like that.
Yeah, I just said, wait, listen.
Anyway, the bungee looks fun. They put you in a harness so the kids can be doing flips in a safe environment. And they have a person there that takes care of them, watches them and they'll have as many of us four kids at a time on the bungee, you know, working out calories.
But just to make sure it's safe for the kids, I think we should try it first.
I don't know if I have enough energy to do those.
Well, it's 200 pound limit, so.
Oh, good.
Not to embarrass you, Mayor, but yeah.
What I can.
Yeah. We'll get Ben on there.
Anyway, this should be a lot of fun.
And just a heads up, we're going to do trunk or treat Halloween night, so keep that on the list as well. And.
That was a massive turnout last year. Oh, my gosh. We had this whole parking lot full with kids and they went around about three times just, you know, making sure the kids were.
Yeah, they kept one.
It was a lot of fun.
I think we didn't notice.
Anything else? And planning commission, anything, I'll speak up on this one. The planning commission's reviewing some ordinance of unlighting and shipping containers right now. And the mayor's office is going to be putting out a questionnaire very soon on a website that asked about, I think back, what I asked the planning commission to do is just give this clarification on some verbiage. Wasn't as crystal clear as I'd like it to be on what the intent on some of the verbiage is. And so I asked them to clarify some of it. It sounds like they're leaning towards changing ordinance. At that point, I don't want to change anything because we have 12 people here that are showing up to the meetings that, you know, want to significantly change whatever the policy is. I just think that we need to have a footprint everybody. So we'll probably spend, you know, a month, month and a half with that survey up and then that way at least whatever we can change, we'll have data from the community that says, here's what I'm okay with and what amount I'm okay with. And so this gives us time to get along the water bill, telling people to look for the link and to, in a couple of meetings, talk about it, the link will be there. The page is ready, I just have been, you know, yesterday I changed it. So I'd like to give myself a day or two to think about things, to make sure that, did we word it properly? Is there a question that I missed? Could I say something better, things like that. Anyway, so probably by next week, we'll have that up and we'll make a splash. We'll give plenty of time, probably as much as six weeks or so of time to have people respond on that. And then at that point, you know, we'll use that information with planning commission to help determine where we're all at. Fire department, junior.
We got the burn season's opening on the 30th, just so everybody knows, so it'll go to, to the 15th of November. And just be careful, we're still dry, we're getting a lot of wind, we've been having a lot of red flag days, so just be careful, get your defensive spades and keep out there. Make sure you call in and we got mitigation forms and burn permits at the office or online. So just make sure you do it the right way and be safe.
Do we need to call if we register online?
Yeah, you still have to call in the morning before, just so I know that day you're burning because dispatch, someone will call dispatch usually. And what they'll do is a warning in time to the book, so.
Check in, you own the level?
Yes.
Junior, you have a question? If perchance a person has a bunch of tumbleweeds that are blowing in their yard from this pasture out here, would if they were to burn one at a time, a burn ring?
Yeah, they're okay with that. I usually don't get mad or anything, so go ahead.
Would you like us to still call you if we do?
No, if they're burning in your legal burning pit, then don't worry about it.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just, I know what you guys are doing, so if you have a burning pit, you guys are fine. But if you have a ton of them and you want the engine there, just call me and I'll put the engine there.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Big plans? Don't have anybody here from big plans. Big Plains, um, don't know if anybody here from Big Plains. Code enforcement, Rich, you have anything to share?
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I've, uh, red tagged a property a day or so ago about trailer, about a permit double Y. Uh, fixing to do another one on solar panels that, uh, that put them in. Uh, nuisance complaints, uh, you can do it on a, on a verbal, and I don't have a problem with that, depending on the circumstances. Uh, I'd prefer a nuisance, but, uh, there's a number of people that don't like to do that, and that's okay. I had a complaint and I called a guy in Texas today, he's on his way back. Um, and I said that, uh, also on the nuisance complaints that have been turned in, uh, we've seen some results, we've seen some cars moved. People are starting to feel a little more confidence about it. It's, uh, been quite a pass here, so they're feeling a little more open about bringing things up, at least to me. Uh, they kind of know where I stand. If, uh, if you can't do the job right, don't do it at all. So I'm not for, uh, I just feel that you follow the code and, uh, I think the planning commission is on the right track, so, uh, any help? Uh, there's a lot of complaints out there, but, uh, hopefully, uh, this area can kind of look a little better than it's looked in the past. That's it.
All right, thanks, Rich. Uh, he's, uh, his job's, uh, needs to stay a thankless job.
Really?
And, um, he works at it every day, so we appreciate your effort to help out the community. Um, roads and storm drainage, Dan, you got anything on that?
Uh, we're just in ongoing process of what we're trying to do. We're going to start all the more centers soon, once we get a couple operators to drive the truck and run the backhoe so we can load the truck. We've got to get Rich from, uh, Jared, who's just sitting around not doing anything, going fishing.
That's right. Yeah. Speaking of fishing...
I, I, I sit there on my chair waiting for you to call. I didn't do any fishing.
You do the fishing. Well, I was not down there, so I stopped there way back.
I get to see the pictures.
Now, boys.
So on the roads, I, I see we did the city repair. It looks like, you see the stop, you know, up on the corner there, it's been filled in, but I haven't seen anything for the mortar department repairs on the paved roads.
I'm not sure it's the same, uh, I've, I've got them about it and they're, I'm, uh, I, uh, I've got a, you know, an opinion on that, I just think that the town needs to probably improve our code a little bit that requires it in a timeframe. And when they don't do it, then we just do it in the bill. And, uh, so we'll probably head in that direction, but for right now, it's...
But do we complete the ones that other cities respond? Because it looks like the one at the stop sign was filled in or, um, or something.
You know, s- we threw a little bit of stuff in there, it's not a patch, it's a band-aid.
Okay, it didn't look that solid, but it's like it is something.
The amount of, uh, some of those dips that you have from the water lines or, excuse me, the drains that was put in, um, they still have blacktop bottoming, you know, you know, kaboom, when you go over them, it's, um, it's more money than I wanted to spend right now with, uh, a few other things that are on the list of, you know, things we need to do. And, uh, I hate to, to not do them, but at the same time, it's, you know, the bid we had was about six thousand dollars, and, uh, so this time, we haven't decided to go ahead and do that. The water district does theirs and they're gonna, um, buy some mix that we probably tackle that and get our volunteer broach training involved and, you know, maybe that's what we do. But it hasn't happened yet.
Right.
Um, mosquitoes, is there anything going on there, Margaret?
Yeah, there's mosquitoes. And, um, there is...
Thank you.
There is, there is West Nile virus that, that is around Washington County, so just be aware of it when you go out later in the evening to, you know, cover up or spray yourself. Don't have any standing water, I don't know, we have them out in our area, they said there's not down here, but we have them out in our area, so I don't know. I guess I'm falling down on my job, you know, because I can't find the standing water where they're coming from.
Most of it's dried up, hasn't it?
I, I don't know.
The bombs have dried up.
Yeah, I've been over there in that direction, you guys have a lot more trees than what we do in Mount Sinai Drive, and I don't know if it comes to the trees or what, but it's, you guys have a lot more bugs over there than what we do. But, uh, anyway.
But one good thing is, you know, it's going to start getting colder, so they'll be gone, along with the flies and the ants and everything, so that's on the good side. We're good. Yeah, we're good. That's about it.
Okay. Thanks for, uh, your volunteering your time to do that for us. Um, next item will be, uh, public comments, so we'll open up the door, public comments.
Rich. Yeah, Rich Cop eleven eighty-three, East Big Canyon. Going back to the, um, meet and greet, I think it's a disservice to the public not to have one. How is the public really supposed to make an educated decision on a candidate if they really don't know what they stand for? And two, going back to the fire department, um, regardless of the building, if it's a modular home or regardless, three hundred and fifty foot to the front of the house, there must be a hydrant or some kind of fire suppression, correct?
It's just new, yeah, I mean, the whole building doesn't have been placed, I don't know. I mean, I can go in there and red tag them and tell them they have ninety days to put in a, put in a line, but you know, that's just like, that's like shooting a gun at someone.
Yeah, but you was, you was talking about somebody looking to flop down on a modular home or something.
Yeah, like those guys did over there across from Cedar Point, yeah, there's no fire protection, and they just came up with a number that they think is going to work for your fire protection, so I don't know what, what's going to get there.
Well, that, that place doesn't have zoning, it doesn't have a permit, it doesn't have anything, so...
So they don't, yeah, a leg to stand on right now, they don't, right?
They, they are few jumpers.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, and, fire's question, by the way, the model soup's a dog jumper.
Right.
That's me.
Margaret?
Margaret was asking one oh two for West Little Canyon. I agree with Rich Cop in regards to meet and greet. How do we know what, uh, the candidates stand for? I, I think the public should have it, and if the other, if the candidates don't want to show, then that's their choice, but I think it should be offered to, you know, for the town, for people to come in here, what they have to say. Doesn't have to be a debate, just, you know, come and talk.
Uh, thanks for your feedback.
One more.
Yeah.
So at the last election, uh, Robert Campbell wasn't at the, at the meet and greet. There was a lot of people at the last election and we were at both functions, so it was very informative, it was very packed, it was very interesting, and I know from the people I've talked to, uh, that question has come up. I didn't have an answer then...
What question?
But I do now. So you don't have it, and then Blackhawk decides to do what Robert Campbell does and has a big blowout at his party, and he does a lot of good singing, I think, with the good. Anyway...
I'd go to that.
Yeah, uh, there'd be a lot of people that goes to it. But to protect your interests, I think if they want to show up, they can, if they don't want to show up, that's their option, but I think people want to hear what's happening with this town. And that's, as code enforcement, I also get a lot of input as I go along, and people ask me a lot of questions, and, uh, I think that's not my job, so I tell them, you can talk to the mayor, email the mayor, call the mayor. I told two people today already, and one was in Texas. So, um, I think just to be on the safe side and not have the other candidate put one over on you and do what happened with Bob Campbell, and he, it was his option not to go. But I just think it'd be fair for the public to hear somebody speak that cares about their town.
I went to both of them too, yeah, it was, both of them were informative.
Yeah.
When they, you went, Rich and Judith had theirs separate, and then we went to the other one. I, I, I think that, if there's two of them, I'd go.
And once you set it up, I'll probably guarantee you that, uh, Mr. Blackhawk will also have one at his house, or somebody's house, so, that's the way it is.
Okay.
Hi.
Jerry?
Um, just on the blade out here, did we ever get anybody to look at that?
I saw them, uh, right out yesterday.
Okay. So they, did they get, yeah, like, oh, it was right there in the...
Um, I'll, can I tell you, I don't know the results of what they did, but I just, I did see them out there just...
Because we got some roads out here and stuff that really need to be fixed, they're really getting bad, so...
Yeah, you can, uh, fire it up, see if it's leaking, but attempts are, they've got to tighten down, otherwise it would probably...
Yeah, broken hose or, uh, loose fittings or something.
And if it's still leaking, as far as they have parts, a part order, but, you know, you can probably fire it up and not ruin anything. And if it's not leaking, they've got to tighten down, and if it is leaking...
Well, it takes a little bit, it's got, it's got to heat up for a minute.
I can give a call and warn, warn out what it is.
I don't, so...
But I did see them out there.
That's why I've been fishing, right?
So anybody else want to make a comment? All right, so, um, we'll close public comment, last item on there.
I'd like to make a motion, Rich, Jerry.
I second.
And vote?
Aye.
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 Means, Jerry, we do have one more meeting, if, uh, you guys want to hang tight with those two seconds here. Um, we're going to, uh, to the town council water oversight meeting. And, um, so I'll call this meeting ordered, uh, September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, um, you've already done the pledge and, uh, roll call. Well, let's do a roll call for the sake of this one, if you don't mind.
Mike, the block one here.
Debbie, cop here.
Marty, listening to you here.
Anybody?
And, uh, call excuse. Um, discussion action, item number A is approval of resolution BPW dash two one nine, two zero one nine dash oh four. Basically, that's a resolution that was passed down by, um, the powers-to-be at the state level wanting this, um, adoption of use of public or, uh, company assets. In other words, we, uh, they want to have a policy on record that says that it's not right for someone to borrow the water district's backhoe, um, but the water district doesn't have backhoe accountants. And, uh, so they just don't really have any public, um, you know, the, the dump truck tower or so forth, so...
They have a four-wheeler.
They have a four-wheeler, they have, you know, a company vehicle, so, anyway, it's just a matter of...
It also puts off the supplies.
Says off the supply as well.
Devices before.
So, anyway, it's about abuse of any, uh, public facilities and what the policy is on that, so. This is just recommended, like you say, from the state level, that we have to...
Four- wheeler trucks.
So, you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve resolution BPW twenty nineteen dash oh four. Second.
And this is a matter of discussion, this was looked at by the water district in your last meeting, and they, um, suggest that we approve it, so, vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, we'll sign up on that. And approval of minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Any changes or suggestions on that one?
Make the motion to approve the minutes for July seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. Second.
Aye.
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 And the last, right along the agenda?
Make a motion, Rich, Jerry.